If you go into the ballroom, there are all kinds of posters and stuff from when it was a whistle stop and they had the big band.
And we're on the air. Good evening, welcome to the New Market zoning board of adjustment meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2019. We're back after a three-month hiatus and our first order of business as always is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next agenda item is review and approval of minutes of April 3rd, 2019.
I have one clarification I need done on that one.
Okay.
On page five, line 37, there's something that doesn't quite read but Jonathan Sacks asked if there had been any problem where a lot of people stopped to pick up, take out food in that area. Would the management of that would change at all?
Oh, okay.
Asked if there was any, this is the restaurant downtown, Mexican restaurant.
Yeah.
And he partners upstairs.
Yeah.
Asked if there was any problem where a lot of, I think he was asking about whether people try to stop in front of the, without a, you know, wanted groups space.
Well, would the, would-
And would the management of that change at all? I don't know.
There's an extra "would" in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if you delete that "would" before the word "change."
It just, just reads odd. It sounds like it's an incomplete thought.
I'll have that one, this one.
Oh, that one?
So, stat, first one.
Would the management of that change at all?
Right, he's asking whether-
Meaning the management of the business, or-
Parking.
For parking.
The management of the parking.
Just as an extra "would" in there, that was the only thing I picked up.
Yeah.
Delete the second one. Anything else, Bob?
I didn't pick up anything else.
This is probably just a slight clerical error, so on the agenda item, it's listed as 4-3, but in the email, it was listed as April 1st, so I just want to get the dates.
Of course, correct.
So, this is the 15th, and then there was the April 1st minutes, but it was listed as 4-3 on the-
Oh, it should be, it should be April 1st.
April 1st.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure it was, because on the agenda item here-
Yeah.
It's April.
On the agenda, it's April 3rd.
Yeah, it should be.
It should be April 1st.
But I'm working it, it should be April 1st and the 15th.
Correct, yeah.
Two separate-
Yep.
We're taking up the April 1st minutes, first.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept as amended.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next, review and approval of minutes of the April 15th, 2019 meeting. If there's no comments, I'll accept the motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And finally, review and approval of minutes of the June 3rd, 2019 meeting. If there's no suggestions or changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Show me some standing, because I wasn't there.
Okay. So, it's 4-0 in favor and Bob abstains from the approval of those minutes. Okay, agenda item number three is our regular business. This is the application of Bingham Junction LLC, Shane McGowan. It's a public hearing for an application for a variance from section 32-87, sub-paragraph two of the New Market zoning ordinance to perma-construction of an 18-foot by 12.3-foot addition to the railroad depot, which will be 17.1 feet from the Easterly property line where a 25-foot setback is allowed. The property is located at 3 Rockingham Junction, tax map R3, lot 13A in the B1 zone. And the way we do these things, if you've not been here before, is we've got your application materials, we've reviewed everything. This is an opportunity to explain things to us, but whatever else you, other evidence you want to put on the record, and then we'll have public comment, which I anticipate will be brief, if not nonexistent, and then we'll ask questions and we'll go from there.
I'm Alex Ross, I'm an engineer and supervisor.
Prepare the plans. I'm here tonight with the owner, Sean McGowan.
I think in your package, you have all these plans.
We do.
I'd be happy to pass them on if someone doesn't have them.
We have them.
Yeah.
If you're going to refer to that, maybe move it a little bit closer. I don't know if you're going to point at anything, because some of us don't see very well.
May I, I'd like to know?
We're here. These are the jokes, people.
I'd like to talk about some additional handouts, just to understand what you did.
Thank you.
I think you're ready. Do you want your excuse back?
Let me show you how to copy for the file.
Be ready.
Okay, so you've handed us what looks like four additional photographs that were not in the original packet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure. So, we've been working on this site for quite a long time. I'm not sure if any board members were here years ago, but back in 2008, we were before both towns for a pretty, pretty involved site plan that included a bunch of additional buildings. So, you can see that with this. So, you can see in 2008, there was an addition, we proposed an addition on the train station, and then two new large buildings with a very large asphalt-paved parking lot. The economy kind of took a nosedive around that time, and the owner decided not to do that intense of a project. So, if you turn the sheet, you can see a couple of years later, 2013, we came back before the town, downsized, did a small addition off the train station, smaller parking area and gravel parking area. So, that, of course, was with a previous owner. The plans that you have before you tonight are even less impact than the 2013. And you can see in those color plans that you have of the site plan, there's a small addition, just 12 by 18 feet, and a small, reasonable gravel parking area. Were there variances required in 2008, 2013? Yes. They were all approved.
There were setbacks?
Yes.
Setback variances?
Yes.
The planning was also granted some waivers, the gravel parking lot was one, I was lying. There's also some waivers on the parking that was located in the site.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And back on those runs through the town, we went to both towns, ZBA, planning board, everything was approved. So, we feel what, what we're showing tonight is even less than those other two that were approved. I'd be happy to read through the application, if the board would like.
Don't, don't feel necessar-, assume that we've read the application.
Okay.
This is just your opportunity, if there's anything you want to expand on, and we may have questions for you, but I don't feel like you need to read the application to us.
Okay.
Most of us can read. So, just your opportunity, if there's anything additional you want to add or expand upon.
Sure.
Feel free.
Yeah, and I guess in a real general sense, and that the owner can expand on this, I don't know if the, how familiar the board is with this site, but it's, it's a great site out there, right next to this Rails to Trails. We've been working out there all different times a year, and so many different people come out there, go cross-country skiing, biking, snowmobiling. So, we feel that the improvements that Sean has proposed are really going to further all that activity, and it's just going to be a benefit for the town.
I may add in addition to that?
Sure.
The, this is definitely a, not a financial investment, this is a community impact investment. If you're familiar with this property, it was graffiti, it's been vandalized, it's in disrepair, people park essentially wherever they want down there.
They've tried to burn it down at least twice.
Tried to burn it down multiple times. I respectfully would put forth, I don't think you'll find another opportunity where somebody is as willing to restore and renovate this property, because it's an economic uncertainty at best. So, I'm doing this because I'm passionate. I live in New Fields, right on the other side of this, this vocation. I spent years running on this trail. I see the importance to the community, and I'm going to do this for the community. I ask for your consideration of that.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Okay. So, there are no members in the public here, it is necessary for me to open the floor for public comment at this point in time.
So, this is where the bus stops in Massachusetts.
This is, yeah. Seeing known, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and open the floor for discussion. You can sit down, Mr. Ross. If we have questions, you have the opportunity to come up.
Thank you.
Bob, did you want to-
I don't have any questions. I thought the written information was well put together, and it was quite clear to me. And-
Okay.
I like the whole idea. I think that place should be salvaged.
My only thing I want to make sure that we have on the record is, I think the first four criteria are very easily satisfied in my mind, looking at the application. I just want to talk a little bit in order to protect the record, protect the applicant, really, that in terms of the hardship criteria, that you have a small property that is hard up against the railroad track, which really limits the options. It's an unusual configuration of lot, the way the building is kind of back in one of the corners of the triangle, which in my mind makes it unique relative to other properties in the area. And the expansion is going to have, into the setback, is going to have virtually no impact on abutting properties of any kind that I can see. So, in my mind, this is a unique property. There are unique characteristics of this property that distinguish it from others in the area, due to the proximity, unusual shape and configuration of the lot and the proximity of the railroad tracks that would make it an unnecessary hardship if the variance were denied.
And the historic aspect, too, makes it very unique.
Yes, I agree, I agree with that. I just want to make sure that that's on the record, so everybody's adequately protected. And with that in mind, I will entertain a motion to approve the variance.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the variance and use the material presented as our finding of fact.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you very much. We wish you the best of luck.
Long, long good luck.
How did it go with you at the New Fields Planning Board last week? How did that go?
We did not go to the New Fields Planning Board last week. Decided to go to their ZBA first.
Okay.
Their ZBA wanted to reaffirm in judgment they made in relation to the two-foot offset off the back rail, or the back lot line. So, we'll do that and then go on up to-
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
You're in here.
Sure. We'll get you over a reasonable hour tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, our next order of business is consideration of our proposed amendments to rules of procedure. Dan, why don't you talk about this, because you drafted these, there's been some changes to statutes.
Since such a long time, I guess what we were trying to figure out. There's some new language that was included during the 2018 holiday, regarding perma-construction of the law, and there are two methods that have been used over the years in voting on variance criteria. Some communities take a single vote on five, while others vote on each criterion individually. And so long as there's three votes in affirmative, then that necessitates the approval of the variance. And here in New Market, since I've been here, 2008 or 2006, 13 years, we've always taken a single vote, and the board deliberated and helped to identify the findings of facts in the basis of which the denial or approval was granted.
I stand against the intent of the amendment is to make sure that the, that the procedure reflects our actual practice. Either way is okay, as long as your procedures are consistent.
That's correct. And it was suggested by the Office of Strategic Initiatives to include that information in the bylaws. So, I have made amendments to the bylaws, and in doing so, Sue Jordan went through, and she found a couple of things that she felt should be changed as well, based on the most recent version.
Is that what you sent to us?
Yes. There's a memo that I prepared that explains it in general terms.
You've got a lot more changes on yours than I see on mine. So, what am I missing?
It could be that you're not in, it's not in red.
Oh, it's not in red. I see. I was looking for red lines. Okay, I didn't print it in red.
Here. I think there's a copy in right here. There you go.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got it right up here.
Okay, good. So, and of course, the zoning board can amend its rules of procedure in any point. You don't have to have a public hearing, you just need to make it official and it becomes effective as a most coordinated, essentially.
I had to, do we have to adopt, adopt one or the other? Or could we adopt one, like we've been voting on the four, five at once, and then if anybody has real strong objection to that, we could?
You would have to change the bylaws first, and I believe there's some language to that effect in the RSA. So, changes to this voting method are effective 60 days after the date at which the ZBA decides to change the method. So, I think the idea behind that is that it can't be changed on a case-by-case basis, based on-
That's what I'm getting at.
Based on what the application is. So, it's, you know, to provide some fairness in the process to the applicant.
So, we adopt one or the other, unless we as a board want to go another way.
To change it. That's correct. But it can't be done at the same night of the meeting.
Well, we can be done.
Right.
You've got to understand, too, that we meet four or five times a year, maybe.
Yeah.
If you go to Manchester, they'll have 30 variance applications in a meeting, and they'll go, they go through them like this.
Yeah.
You know, or Rye or Portsmouth, they have a lot of applications in any given, or Durham. So, the method we use in the time I've been here has worked pretty well.
I don't have a problem. I just, if there was, I, I just had that question.
We have, from time to time, had very extended discussions of one particular criteria or another, but as long as it's clear on the record exactly what we're doing, it's fine. As long as, as long as the court can figure out what we're doing and why we're doing it.
So, we can still discuss vote number three specifically.
Oh, absolutely.
You can discuss it.
Yeah.
But if you want to change the voting method, then it has to be done, but after you change the bylaws.
You can say, "I'm voting against this primarily because I feel the applicant hasn't met criteria three," or whatever.
I think our method works better, because it's possible that three people would have an issue with one item, and the others wouldn't, and then, but this way, we look at the whole package and work with the whole package. I agree.
Yeah, at the meeting of the Office of Strategic Initiatives, there was a whole-
Yeah, you attended the discussion.
-discussion of, in, in theory, you could have a quorum, three votes for an application, but people disagree about the application, different people disagree about different criteria. So, you can tie yourself up in knots, playing these games. We don't do that, because we just don't do it. We don't have, the applications not to, are not that, haven't been that particularly challenging in that respect.
One other question. How do, how do the big boys do it most of the time? This is just curious.
They're all over the place.
I've seen it different ways. When I worked, I was on the planning board, excuse me, the zoning board in Nottingham, my hometown, many years ago, and we did each criteria separately, and we did run into problems in coming to a consensus on some applications. My last job before New Market was with the town of Merrimack, which is not quite as big as Nashville or Manchester, but we use the system that this board currently uses.
The language that you and Sue put into the draft amendment, where did that come from?
I drafted it based on the RSA.
What I'm looking-
And Susan has drafted her changes based on what was in the Office of Strategic Initiatives handle.
What specifically I'm looking at is disqualification, and specifically-
Which paragraph is that?
The last paragraph, the disqualification, the paragraph to me.
Yeah.
It says either the chair or a member disqualifying him or herself before the beginning of the public hearing on the case shall announce the disqualification. The disqualified member shall exit the meeting room during the public hearing and during all deliberations on the case. Is that necessary?
Yeah.
I think that's a-
I don't think that's necessary.
It's probably not necessary, right, Bob?
I think our, you just go and sit in the, in the audience.
You just have to show that you're separate from the discussion.
You know, if, if it's an abutting property, and I disqualify myself because of that, I may have, I may want to sit in there to speak as an abutter.
Right.
So, that was the only objection I saw.
It's page three, or page four at the top.
Page four.
This has not been our practice.
No.
Because, because, Bob, I think the, the last case, you recused yourself, right?
Wayne.
Oh, Wayne, okay, yeah.
He sat in the audience.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but that's fine. I, I would support striking that sentence from the amendment. I don't think that's, I don't think it's necessary.
Right.
I think it limits, limits our, our options as residents of town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you disqualified yourself from something, Wayne. I forget if you were-
He was the one submitting the variance.
Was it you?
Yeah, it was the variance for his frontage on his daughter.
Oh, right, 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 right.
And suddenly, it was a new lot or a new house.
Right. But you sat in the audience, because you're entitled to speak to the application.
Correct.
You're not abandoning your rights as a citizen.
That says no.
Yeah, understood.
That's a good, good point.
And that's not our, that's not our practice, anyway.
Yep.
That was the only thing I had, really. I mean, everything else kind of made sense. I mean, a lot of it was just procedural, about, you know, notifications and decisions and things like that, so that, that deals more with how you handle things.
You know what I want to do before we, before we act on this? Can we run this by John?
Sure.
Let's just run it by John Radigan.
Okay. I don't think there's anything in here.
I know, but I, I feel, what are we paying for?
Yeah, he's-
He's the expert, okay?
Because anybody goes horribly wrong, we can blame it on him.
His, his degree of suspicion is probably a little higher than ours.
Well, he's, he sees a lot of these for a lot of different boards.
Yeah.
So, it's, it'll take him 15 minutes to read through it, and he'll just say, "Consider this, consider that."
And we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think there's any big, I don't think there's any big rush.
I think that's a good suggestion.
So, back to that voting, I just want to make sure I understand, because I know there's some discussion there. So, when we do the single vote on all five criteria, we still can say, you know, not, like, you would be denying the application due to failure to meet criteria at one or three or four, so-
You can still do that.
You can still do, okay.
You just don't have to vote on each and every criteria.
Right, right.
It just streamlines it a little, streamlines it a little bit?
Yep.
But when we had-
Let's put it this way, if we get, if we get members that are objecting to a couple of items on, on two or three items-
It's a bad application.
Bad application.
Yeah.
I mean, tonight was just-
Easy.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I think if you take, take the suggestions, since you've heard Dan back, back, make them and shoot it off to John, let's get his input.
Sure.
If he has suggestions or things that other boards do that we have not considered, we're happy to consider them, and we'll take it up at our next regular meeting.
Okay.
To take effect at the meeting, after the meeting.
There's, there's no timeline on adopting these, is there?
Oh, no.
Nope.
No, it's just a-
It's a good idea, though, this is-
Housekeeping practice, it's all.
They recommended this as a best practice to make, just to make sure that your procedures comply, because different towns have different-
Correct.
Different towns are far more litigious than we are.
Who presented this at the conference, do you recall? Was it somebody from Strategic Initiatives? Was it a lawyer?
I thought it was one of the lawyers. It was a number of the lawyers repeated the same theme. It was a long time ago now. Jonathan was there, too. He may remember in more detail, but this goes back to the, to the spring, early spring. Okay, so Dan's going to take those suggestions back to John Radigan and bring this back with any changes he may suggest for us to consider. Any new or old business become before the board at this time.
October 5th.
It's my birthday.
It's Christmas birthday, happy birthday.
28th, again.
Yeah, again. That's the Office of Strategic Initiatives, one-day workshop for planning and zoning board members. And I believe Susan, the meeting agenda?
Yeah.
To everyone and anyone who's interested in attending?
You okay?
I'll make it, I'll make it.
Is it in Concord? Where is it?
It's in Concord.
Those things are worth going to, I think. You get, they cram 15 minutes' worth of information into three hours, but I think it's still worthwhile going.
Oh, you're really, you're really selling it good.
Yep.
But when we had, let's put it this way, if we get, if we get members that are objecting to a couple of items on, on two or three items...
It's a bad application.
Bad application.
Yeah.
I mean, tonight was just...
Easy.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think if you take, take the suggestions that you've heard, Dan, back, back, make them and shoot it off to John, and let's get his input.
Sure.
If he has suggestions of things that other boards do that we have not considered, we're happy to consider them, and we'll take it up at our next regular meeting.
Okay.
To take effect at the meeting after the meeting.
There's, there's no timeline on adopting things, is there?
Oh, no.
Nope.
No, it's just a...
It's a good idea, though.
Housekeeping practice, that's all.
They recommend that this is the best practice to make, just to make sure that your procedures comply, because different towns have different...
Correct.
Different towns are far more litigious than we are.
Who presented this at the conference, do you recall? Was it somebody from Strategic Initiatives? Was it a lawyer?
I thought it was one of the lawyers. It was a number of the lawyers repeated the same theme. It was a long time ago now. Jonathan was there, too. He may remember in more detail, but this goes back to the, to the spring, early spring. Okay. So Dan's going to take those suggestions back to John Ratigan and bring this back with any changes he may suggest for us to consider. Any new or old business become before the board at this time?
It's October 5th.
It's my birthday.
It's Chris's birthday. Happy birthday.
28, again.
Yeah, I get it. That's the Office of Strategic Initiatives, one-day workshop for planning and zoning board members. And I believe Sue sent a meeting agenda...
Yeah.
To everyone, and anyone who's interested in attending.
You okay?
I'll make it, I'll make it.
Is it in Concord? Where is it?
It's in Concord.
Those things are worth going to, I think. You get, they cram 15 minutes' worth of information into three hours, but I think it's still worthwhile going.
You're really, you're really selling it.
I can hardly wait to attend.
Usually lunch is good.
It's very, they're very interesting to go to, to listen to other people's experiences and war stories. We're, we're pretty civilized compared to a lot of other boards.
It's before hunting season.
It's before hunting season, too. That is important to bear in mind.
Ducks.
Okay. Any other new or old business become before us at this time?
No.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Aye, baby. I'm saying... Oh, no. You have two seconds.
We'll give it to Bob, and we'll give James a second. We'll do it by seniority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.